And Donna, I have a. Donna, I have a special mic for you today. Let me know. You don't hear me.
I can, I can hear you, Aroche.
I got, I got upgraded.
I can hear you and I have four other people talking around me. So I guess that's a plus.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Right on time, Casey. Perfect timing. Couldn't have been any better. It's all right, right on time.
The guy got hit on the train track. It shut down the street.
Yeah. I know. Yeah. What?
ZBA.
Oh, ZBA. Okay.
Doc Macintosh.
Doc Macintosh?
There's a sign on the front.
Okay, it's in Doc Mac.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Counselor Capola. Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Pianessa.
Here.
Counselor Roth.
Here.
Counselor Vich.
Here.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, we have our audience of citizens first. Anyone wishes to speak to us now would be the time. If anyone wishes to speak, yes. Julia. Oh, he's busy. He's fine.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Julia Dennis, 115 Norton Road. I just wanted to come and discuss the most recent referendum and the voter turnout. First, I'd like to talk about democratic process. This is cited from the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services website. So, Jack, I'm right here. You can come here if you'd like. The Constitution, it's quoted, "The Constitution established the United States as a democratic republic." The Democrat, it's democratic because the people govern themselves. It's republic because the government's power is derived from its people. It means that our government, federal, state, local, is elected by the citizens. Citizens vote for their government officials, and these officials represent the concerns and ideas of the citizens and the government. Voting is one important way that we can participate in our democracy. And again, cited from www.uscis.gov/citizenship. So our local elections are part of a participatory budgeting process that engages voters to help set the budget. As elected officials, it is important to consider the voting data beyond the surface level to maintain the democratic process and the participatory budgeting that is established. Typically, referendums have voter voter turnout than larger municipal elections. The April 2023 referendum had a 10.05% voter turnout. I believe, I think that was the unofficial number. And the May, I believe the unofficial or maybe official is 7.26%. I'd like to address this topic tonight with the council. As you guys are going to be discussing the budget and the recommendations set forth by the Board of Finance, it's easy to say that 7.26% of voters participated in the second referendum and draw conclusions such as, you know, no one came out, so we must be doing a good job. Or on the other hand, no one cares because they didn't come out. Or, you know, 7.26 isn't enough to dictate a mill increase for many. Well, maybe if you consider the majority vote from it might in turn inspire more voters to vote in future referendums. However, referencing the percentage scale associated with the turnout in past elections, I think needs to be considered. So I want you guys to consider the historical referendum data. You might have it. The board had it from our March 13, 2023 meeting as we discussed voting at schools when schools are open. It was important for the board to consider these numbers. So I brought some copies for you guys. This is an email that we received from one of the registrars, just for the board to consider. So, you know, April 2018, the first referendum, the first referendum was 16.9, so significantly higher. May 22, 2018, it was 12.6, so on and so forth. And then you can see it kind of decreases. And then our 7.2, our 10.05 and our 7.26 were the highest referendum voter turnouts over the past four years. I understand COVID, you know, needs to be taken into consideration. So recently, I learned that historically, referendums were held in the high school gym. I didn't know that. In the past, people would come out and raise their hands, and this is probably not the most effective or efficient way to vote on a town budget. And I guess it would turn quite contentious and lead to lots of debates and public fights. So I know we're not going to go back to that in time, though it might be more entertaining. However, if the voters took the democratic process seriously through the participatory budget process set forth, I think that needs to be considered. People are saying, and I've heard this since, you know, Thursday's Board of Finance meeting, my vote doesn't matter. People that I've heard from haven't been happy. And I just, you know, do you as a town council want people to stop voting in local elections so the power can go ahead? The, you know, the power can go to the elected officials and people can do whatever they want. So that's just one thing I want you to consider this evening as you go into your discussion. And then the last thing that I do want to address about the email that I just passed out regarding regarding why we were looking at this data, I think it might be purposeful for the board of that in the town council to come together and try and find a solution to find other places in town to vote for referendums instead of in the school. I know the town council has taken school safety and security very serious. You guys have partnered with us to make it possible to fund certain positions and have phenomenal school security. So we're opening up our doors on these days. We really don't have many options to cancel school because there's already days that have to be canceled. There's no guarantee that we'll even have a second referendum. So, you know, I think moving forward in the future, if we can try and find a way to put referendum places at other locations, that's information that's been brought to the board by conservatives. So I just figured I'd come on the record this evening and share it. That's all I have. Sorry.
Thank you. No, that's okay. That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Julia, you know, we, yeah, we, we are talking about that. I think the Evan at the schools, when they're in session, you know, there is certainly the security and the parking, and it just might not, might not be the best place. We might want to examine that for the next referendum next year and maybe. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, maybe we go to the, like we used to maybe go to VFW or, you know, I mean, we find senior center just for that, maybe just for that vote. Yeah, just for those votes.
Give them a day off.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, huh? Yeah. Well, we could go to that too. Yeah, no, that's probably not a good way, but I, I don't know. We have to talk about that. I, I don't think it works out the best at the schools. You know, so yeah, we'll, we can consider that for the next referendum. Yeah, thanks, Julia. Anyone else? Any citizens? Yes, sir.
Peter Zerboz, 15.
I like this. Bring your child to, to, to the democratic event in town here, the, the town council. Yeah, civics, early civics lessons. Yes, that's good.
So 158 Elwood Road. First, I have mixed feelings. I mean, I, I wanted to thank the council for putting out those large referendum signs around town. I think that did help bolster participation. I mean, I know it was seven and 10% respectively, which is much lower than any of us would want, but is, you know, looking historically, I think past years were three or 2%. So I do think that really helped, and I appreciate that you put those out. I am disappointed to see that the Board of Finance went against the advisory opinion of the voters in the referendum. I recognize that the town council doesn't have any control over them as a board, and I understand. But I do hope that the town council will at least consider the side of the referendum budget that they can control in the sense that the town did say that it felt the budget was still a little bit too high. And I hope that there is some potential answer you can do to satisfy the voice of the voters in that referendum. I do recognize it's a reevaluation year. I recognize that you and the Board of Finance have done a lot to make, to make cuts. But ultimately, I find it disappointing that, you know, a Board of Finance came to a bipartisan decision to just ignore the referendum results. And I hope that you guys will do something to kind of answer the other half of the equation. So have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I should have paid a kid to come with me.
Got a place without a young child. Come on, Sam. What's the story?
I'm gonna speak differently on the referendum. Traditionally, I was doing some research. Budget referendums always come in low on a national level unless there's a major, major outcry out there. And I think people understand that there wasn't really a major outcry because people, I think, understand the revamp is revamp. Your taxes are going up and there's nothing the council or the Board of Finance could do about. And, you know, and a good example is I had a conversation over the weekend. I went to a party and there was two people that voted no too high or whatever. And I said, well, what do you want them to cut?
On the government, on the government side?
What do you want them to cut? I said, you want them to go garbage? And they looked at me, God, no. Do you want them to go? So he really didn't have an answer. So I think the Board of Finance did the right thing. And I know there's going to be people out there that are going to say, whoa, you ignored the vote. But at the end of the day, it's town governments. You got to run the government. You can't just randomly cut and cut and cut where you don't give the town hall employees or any of the tools to do business with. And I think that, and I think the town has really accepted that. So I think that's why there's a voter, a low voter turnout. I think there was a if there was something out there that people really wanted, trust me, you would get the people out there and they're going to go out there and they're going to vote no or whatever. So there wasn't a major outcry. So I think you should stay status quo on the budget. I think the Board of Finance did a good job, and I think you guys should just accept it. And if people don't understand, then they don't understand. I mean, you have to do your job, and I think you have to, it's got to be a responsible way of doing it. But on the Board of Education, I was always a firm believer that they deserved $495,000 until I did my own research. And I, and the superintendent, when I was on the Board of Finance, I thought we gave him the highest increase, 3%. I really believe that, okay? Then the Board of Finance, the council, you guys given 3.6%, the highest increase that they've received in probably seven or eight years.
I think 20 years.
20 years, I believe. Yes. So then the superintendent, who said he really needed 3.4% for operational. Then I'm looking at the Board of Finance, went, you know, listened to their meeting, and I saw that Mr. Paradise, who knows this town government, that anybody sitting on that Board of Finance, even when I was on, the man has 40 years of experience, stated that 3.6 is more than sufficient to run the Board of Education. What I resent that there's a group of people out there trying to get the parents excited and, and in saying, oh, we're going to have major cuts, we're going to have major cuts. But the superintendent is happy with the 3.6%. He's ecstatic with the 0.36%. And, and I think he's told certain members of the council when you met with him. And I've known the superintendent for 30 years. The superintendent is a straight shooter. If he's happy, then we should all be happy. So I don't think, I think the Board of Finance made the right decision by keeping it status quo. I think the parents. But what I resent that certain people out there try to use this as a political ploy or whatever. There's a lot of things you could do for politics. Let's just keep our hands off kids.
A nonpartisan Board of Ed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
You agree. So I mean, so I would just say, stay where you are, accept this budget, and everyone will be happy. Trust me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience here? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Emel Damanjolo, 86 Devonshire Way.
Hello.
Hello. So I'm
Nice seeing you again.
Seeing you again. We're not, we're not done yet. We're almost done. And I'll repeat this again next year unless we're willing to have a conversation of how to perhaps do this process more efficiently instead of the way it's been going, because this is our draw is not only for
Working together, working together would be a way to start. Yeah.
Exactly. So I don't want to talk about people that are not in this room, but I do believe that it is unfair to talk about the superintendent if he is not here. I am actually asking and coming today, and we, I would have had a lot, many more other friends, other parents who are very concerned about the Board of Ed. Unfortunately, McGee scheduled their last chorus concert tonight, so that's where most of them are. My 14-year-old does not like to sing, so I am here, and he didn't want to join me. Come here. I did ask him to come so I could have a child with me, but he did not want to come.
You messed up too. So you needed a child. That's
I tried to get a child. There is, there is a lot that is to be deserved by, by the process. I think we all know that. The superintendent had initially provided a budget that had a lower contractual obligation at a 3.8 or so. I don't remember exactly the number.
It was 3.46, I think.
And I, I believe, Mayor, you have continued to quoted that budget.
Yes.
Unfortunately, what, what I keep mentioning in some of these sessions is that that budget called for many cuts and us parents disagreed with. Whether you want to call it rallying up the parents or whatever, we are looking at facts and what the superintendent proposed on that budget, which included a lot of cuts that did not make any sense. So we, we were vocal and spoke to one of the Board of Ed meetings, and the Board of Ed actually decided to increase the budget. So it baffles me how, after the Board of Ed, who are elected officials, who has the board just like the Board of Finance, but different, they went with a higher budget, which has the contractual obligations of 4.23. And, and you, Mayor, continue to quote, oh, they should be fine because the superintendent's budget was X. However, the Board of Education voted on a different budget based on input from the parents. And it is that budget that we believe is in the best interest of our schools and of our children. We do not want to see our paraprofessionals go, those that have been outlined to potentially be cut if we don't close the gap with the $290,000 that, that are remaining. Yet we are all grateful for the 3.6. But no, it's not enough based on that budget and based on what the parents are asking for. And I am actually pleased to see that those that were interested and cared went to the referendums and actually voted and said specifically what they did not agree with. No, it's still too low. Yet the Board of Finance decided to not even heed or even consider what the voters are saying. Now, coming through this process, I find that the referendums are not binding. So now you have a whole bunch of people who came out to vote and said, why even vote? So why, why even go out there and vote? Because it's not going to be, it, it's not going to be considered. Some of the discussions that I've heard with the Board of Finance, I'm surprised that any, some of them are part of the Board of Finance. They don't care. I know that they're looking at the bottom line. We're looking at the impact to our children and what it's going to mean to not have the interventionists, not have the special ed teachers, the paraprofessionals, all those that are going to end up being cut based on the 290,000 that are remaining just to meet the contractual obligations. So yes, I am asking you to reject the budget and to hopefully go to joint council. That is the only reason why for the rejection, to go to joint council and to hopefully increase it at least whatever additional can be increased to prevent all of those cuts. It, it, it just, and we can't go back to the original superintendent budget. That's not what the parents believe in. That's not what we agree to. The superintendent, I, I, there will be other conversations as to why, and I have had conversations with them as to why he proposed that budget. But again, I, I don't believe that that is accurate, and it, we, we should be looking at the Board of Ed approved budget with a 4.23% contractual obligations. So I have used the theme, do the right thing. I continue to say it. Do the right thing for our kids, for our education, for our property values. The mill rate doesn't have to go up. There are other ways that, that this can be done, and we are just so close. So I am asking, not only on my behalf, but on the behalf of my friends who are at the chorus concert right now, and all the other parents who are really concerned about what may, what may happen. These are different times. We can't compare it to the past and what we have increased and where it has been. These are completely different times from where we are before. So 4.23 is the minimum to meet the contractual obligations. How much closer can we get to that? And that's what we, what I'm here to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here? Saying none. Anyone online, Kate, that wishes to speak? See no hands raised? Okay, so that closes the audience of citizens on to our new business. Obviously, the budget's here. So perhaps we'll look at the town budget first. I find that vote very interesting that that many folks voted too high. We're, we're about at a 0% tax increase. We're just about there with the, with the mill rate that we lowered. We took, I think, just about everything out of the budget. I, I think everything. The last time it came here, we took the last $1.7 million of capital out of the budget. I don't think there was anything left to take out. There might have been a couple little hundred thousand here or there to take out, Aroche. There was nothing left to take out.
It's, it's the PD pension and the police station renovation.
Oh.
Interest, other than
Oh, the interest, right. The interest on those. Yeah.
You removed it.
Right. There's no, it's cut to the bone. It's, it's cut as low as we've ever cut it. I, I, I don't know what people are looking at for that budget. I mean, we unfortunately can't go negative. I know it's a revamp year, hence that's why we lowered the budget as much as we did on the, on the town side to make up for that. And understanding that we have a, you know, $5 million projected surplus too, which would obviously allow us to do many of those certainly capital projects of which in that, those capital projects, there's $600,000 for the Board of Ed, which will get funded as well as the town side vehicles and different things in that last 1.7 million we took out. So that is another 600,000 for the Board of Ed, just for the folks that don't sometimes consider the capital that they need to do things, bands and different things. That is in the budget to be funded from the surplus. So tell me, you guys, what you think. I mean, we've cut it to nothing, really. There's nothing left. I'm not sure. Maybe folks understood that. And unfortunately, with the revamp, we can't do much with that, but that's why we left it as low as we, that's why we went as low as we could to make sure there was no additional increase to the folks. The, the revamp is, again, you know, statutory. The state controls that. Property values went up in Berlin, which is, which is a positive thing. Unfortunately, we need to to pay for them. It hit it a bad year, you know, that's just the way it is. But so I, I, I don't know if there's much else to take out of the town budget, but the rest of you guys up here and online, tell, tell me what you guys think. What do we think, Peter?
I don't have a problem with the town, the town budget. I don't think you do either, right? I don't think Donna does either.
Okay. What, what do we think?
What are you going to do?
I, I, I don't think we cut anymore from the town than what we've already done.
We'd go negative.
Still operate, eh?
Yeah. Okay. Donna? Both Donna, it's either Donna. Sorry. Donna 1, Donna 2. I don't know.
I apologize. I'm multitasking here, so let me lower this down a little bit. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm good. I don't really have any additional comments to make. I think that we need to move forward. We've done the best we could. And it is what it is.
Okay. Thank you. For the, the government side. Donna?
Agree. Agree with what everyone has said.
All right, thank you. So that's the government side. And again, that's what the Board of Finance thought as well. I think the Board of Finance ended up on a five to one vote, right on the whole budget, is what happened. So now the Board of Ed. So the Board of Ed is an interesting animal, the Board of Ed budget. It's been quite fascinating to me to see, you know, the history, if you go back 15, 20 years. We have in the last five years had an average of an average increase. Let's make sure I get it right, because I don't want to get it wrong. So the last five years, we've averaged about a 3.14% increase. Before this party took power, I'm sorry. I mean, you know, we got, we got to call it like it, we see it. It was a 1.45% average increase for the Board of Ed on several years. So we have raised from the Board of Ed material. This is not my material. This is from the Board of Ed, the, the per pupil spending, which I was educated on many times at a board, at the Board of Ed budget talks over the last seven years. That, that is the, that is the measure of what money is going into a school system by the state and by the federal government. And by the Board of Ed, because as they profess many years, until we raised it over the last five years, the per pupil spending has gone up every year to $20,333, something like that, which is the highest around. I mean, there's nobody, Glastonbury, Avon, all, you know, we've heard these, these school districts thrown out as you know, competitors of ours, or why don't we get funded like they are? We're funded more than they are. And now with the increase that per pupil spending goes up more. So we, we've definitely taken it seriously, very seriously, as we have raised that above anyone in our area with a declining enrollment on top of it. Interesting figures. Last year, I believe, if I can remember correctly, the contractual obligations were, I think, 3.2, somewhere around there. We gave them 2.5 last year. They had a surplus of half a million dollars. Plus, they had some, another 400,000 left in the choice program, I believe. And that's been every year. We've been below contractual obligations every year, even, even though we raised their funding, we still were below contractual obligations. And I believe every year they've had a surplus. So this year, we have a superintendent budget, 30 years in the school system, been through many jobs in the town. Brian Benigni comes out with his budget, 3.46% contractual obligations. We are now at 3.6%. We are above the contractual obligations for the first time, I think, in maybe 15 years. So I think we've done a lot of work on the school system and funded them very well. And that's come, that's from the Board of Ed's material too, that they put out this year. They were happy the last three years with the budget. I'm not understand, I don't understand why, if you can go back as far as you can go back, that I've looked at is 20 years. The Board of Ed's never increased the superintendent's budget, ever, ever. So I find that odd. I'm sorry. And I don't, I don't know what they're basing it on, because I don't think I ever really heard a good explanation, Julie. I'm sorry to say that. I mean, I, I don't know. Well, I, I, you know, you, you can tell me, but I, it's odd. In 20 years, it's never happened. And you've had much lower budgets than this. Yeah, come, yeah, I'm sorry. No, it's a kind of, I know, no, he's fine.
Superintendent came in with had a number of reductions. And after hearing from members of the community and the board going through and considering the needs.
Yeah.
You know, I would never have expected it. A motion was made. I was surprised. We had a really strong discussion, and the board voted 7-2 to increase it, to add in the reductions. People, board members, as well as parents, we've heard from a number of parents. We got a number of emails. You could go back to those meetings, I guess, probably in January, and that, that is why. So again,
Was it the, was it the, wasn't the suggestion to go even higher, like 7% or something?
So I think whatever was thrown out, it was just adding that in.
Yeah.
And we even had a budget workshop that same evening, right before, and there was no discussion around adding during that workshop. It was literally talking about the cuts. I think after everyone sat with those cuts, thought about the cuts, thought about the needs of the students. the learning recovery, the ending of S R. You know, it was suggested, it was discussed, it was voted on. So that, that was why.
Got it, yeah.
And, and again, you know, the superintendent was instructed to come in at around a certain amount.
By the Board of Ed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those, you know, those were our conversations.
Yeah.
And Brian and myself. And, and again, we wanted to be conscious of our spending. And we also want to recognize that, you know, we have worked well together over the past few years. And again, yes, 3.6 is higher than we have in fact.
Ever, in, in 15 to 20 years.
Yes, and, and again, we are really grateful for that, that we can continue to run our school system. But the, the position of the board was to, I'm not gonna go far. The position of the board was to just not continue to reduce. The reason why we were able to cover contractual obligations last year with coming in below, we did eliminate a number of positions, including the assistant superintendent.
I get that.
Which is a huge position, so, so that's.
But no teachers have been really eliminated in the last several years, right? Through attrition, right?
Do it every year, yeah.
I think you have the same number, though, you've had over the last.
It goes up and down depending on.
Between 260, 268 and 270, maybe?
I don't know off the top of my head.
That's, that's kind of the numbers.
The numbers.
That's the numbers.
Okay.
I mean.
But we do make those cuts through attrition. We are, you know, eliminating teachers here. We do try and be conscious of it.
You wanna, you wanna, you wanna grab?
Okay. I don't think he's really gonna vote.
You know, and while, while you're here, though, and, and not, not to you specifically, but while you're here. And you know what? If you want to sit, you know, you could sit down and hold your child, I don't want. You know, the other thing that was disturbing this year, more so than ever, is the information that was on social media from folks of, you know, different folks, just completely incorrect. And, and, and I guess what disturbed me the most was I didn't see anyone from the Board of Ed correcting the false information. I saw other folks on social media correcting the wrong information, but I didn't see Board of Ed correcting the figures like we're at 17,000 per pupil spending. Someone, former head of the DTC put that out there. So I, I just, I, I, I guess my point is, the nonpartisan Board of Ed this year seems very partisan to me personally. That's just my thought after seven years. And what we have done to fund this board this year is more than we've ever funded in 20 years. I don't care what party's in charge. And it's still, it's still not good enough. And we have a professional, we pay a lot of money to, to run our town, Brian Benigni, a lot of money. Been here 30 years. He comes out with a budget. We exceed the contractual obligations like we never have, and it's still not good enough. So I, 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 that's, it's very hard for me to get over that. And, and again, the, I'll call it a campaign that was out there with just completely false and wrong information. Not by you, not, I'm not saying by you, the Board of Ed, but.
A lot of this stuff was also personal towards me.
Yes, sure, absolutely.
It is really unfair, especially when we are all volunteers. We as a board added money to the budget.
Yes.
Responded to the parents.
Right.
We take the democratic process very seriously.
Yeah, I hear you.
We did add money, and people are getting upset with us that we weren't posting on social media. I don't know if you know this, but we do have a social media policy.
Yeah.
That as a board, we do not post and get into back and forth fights.
Yeah, but don't you think that you, as the elected officials, the experts, you and Brian, could have corrected false information?
So I, so I was doing that on the back end, actually.
Okay.
Through private messenger, and like, all those are in my Facebook messenger.
No, I appreciate that. You did that, that's great. No, that's great, yeah.
And then when possible, I have someone go on and address it for me.
Okay, that's good, I'm glad to hear.
I want to make sure I'm following the policy.
Sure, of course.
I think it's valid to say.
Yeah.
Hey, to the Board of Ed, like.
Right.
Should we revise its policy and have one person be responsible for commenting?
And.
But it's just.
But not, not one, not one person, but commented publicly, though, from the Board of Ed or.
Because that's what our policy states and.
That doesn't make sense to me, but whatever.
Email you a copy of the policy.
No, I mean, that might be the policy, but I think they might want to change that, but that's okay.
Okay. Um, so the, the reason why is the past board president, I don't know if you remember, Richard Roy, and he got into a Facebook fight with a former student. And on the buzz, and it turned into.
Just to make sure you didn't go down that stairs, though, the stairs. Here he is, okay.
Thank you. He got into a Facebook fight, it made the board look really bad. It caused a lot of controversy in the town.
Maybe you should consider, just what I saw this year was kind of outrageous to me.
Yeah.
I mean, there's always give and take, I get it, you know, people don't have the right info. But even after it was corrected, it continued, and it continued, it continued, disturbing. So perhaps you appoint a public relations person that could put statements out there. And I don't see why you couldn't, as the chair, elected or not.
Right.
And, or, or you appoint Brian as the person that, with your authorization, can correct what social media, because social media kills us all.
I agree.
Good and bad, you know, it's, there's some good stuff out there, there's bad stuff. It goes both ways, but when it's so wrong.
Interrupt, but.
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt, but.
Yes.
I think, I think to put that totally on the board, even though I, the Board of Ed, even though I know the Board of Ed would be in the right position to correct.
Right.
Information, because they're the ones that have the most information. I think it's, is, I think they do, I think there's a pretty sound policy just not to comment. We do have our public forums, such as the newspaper, and then maybe a councilperson could respond, you know.
We did, well, some of, some people from the Board of Finance responded, correct, they did.
And I saw those responses, and what I would have people do is say like,
Yeah.
link in the meeting and say, go to this meeting to read that.
Yeah.
And, and again, I, I don't disagree with you, because a lot of it too is personal towards me of I'm not doing enough.
I'm sure you were frustrated with it, right?
You wanted to get personal about you, because people, yeah. So I will bring it back to the board that we, we review the policy. I can't say what the board is going to do or not do. But I think social media is really tricky to navigate, because.
No doubt.
You know, the component of stability that exists, and then how things go out there, so.
No, I know.
I think.
We have no control over, we all know that.
So I think based on what had happened under the past president, plus a lot of the stuff with the unmasked, with the unmasked star kids, and the board being attacked, a lot of people, a lot of board members. And the purpose of a board is we act as an entity, not one board member has power, like, and we shouldn't. We, as our group, so by be posting, I could say, you know, Julia Dennis, a parent, citizen, whatever, but still, like, that's still really tricky, because again, I'm still representing the board, and I could say something really offensive, which has happened. Well, I say offensive things.
No, I, I know, I know, no, I know.
So that's.
No, I know, it's difficult.
Policy, and, and so that's like the context.
Yes.
In regards to the 3.6, you know, it is appreciated. However, the board wanted to make sure that all the positions were funded because of the needs of the kids, and it was the decision of the board.
Here's a question, though, I, I still don't understand. How could it, between last year and this year, I know the other young lady here mentioned, well, the past is the past. Well, this was a year ago, okay? So it was after the pandemic a year ago still. I mean, I know some of the funds were still available, I get that.
Yeah.
Right, but two and a half percent increase, 3.2 or 3 contractual obligations.
Yep.
And still a surplus.
Because I think every year we.
And declining enrollment again this year by a few students, right? We're down, we're down negative.
The numbers off the top of my.
Well, per your charts, we're down.
So.
Right.
How? Because we've made reductions, year over year, over year, we reduce, we reduce, we reduce. And now we're at a point where we can no longer reduce. Like, we've gone administration, we've gone teachers, we've gone paraprofessionals. We're going, you know, custodial, secretarial, and then with contractual obligation.
Yeah.
A lot of that is totally out of our hands, based on the state. It's, if we're not gonna win it.
Right.
Like, going to mediation or arbitration, if we're going to lose it, is irresponsible to the taxpayer, if that's possible.
Let me ask you this, though. So you got, you got a town like Rocky Hill, about 20,000 people, think their enrollment's up 6%. Their per pupil spending is less than ours, okay? I think they're, I don't know what their total budget is, but I know it's less than ours. 6% increase in enrollment. We're down, we're negative 400 students over the last few years, down in enrollment, somewhere around there, 406, I want to say. I'm not sure that's exact, but it's close. So how is that possible? That a, a town right next to us, I mean, I work in Rocky Hill, I observe that town, and, you know, pretty much we have a lower mill rate, I guess, too. We have higher per pupil spending now, highest in our area, higher than them, 6% increase in enrollment. And they seem to be pulling it off, a, and we're higher, more, more budgets going to you guys, more money than they're getting with a reduced enrollment. I, it just, to me, doesn't add up. But, but, so I, I just, I, I don't understand.
I think.
Why we're in this boat this year, and we weren't last year, with a higher increase this year. Obviously, we're at 3.6%.
Cut other positions last year that were able to.
But with it, with.
Bigger.
Is Rocky Hill doing the same? Do, I know you're not familiar with them, I know, but I, I, I mean, I'm just looking at our surrounding towns and.
Brand new baby in the middle.
No, I know that.
Been really hard.
I get that.
You know.
Yeah.
I think, I think the, the thing is, is as you continue to cut, there's less places to cut from, and then other.
But, but of course, we're not cutting anything. You got a $1.8 million increase this year over last year, right? That's 3.6% of 50 million?
Things in, like, we didn't add back in the assistant superintendent, we didn't add in other positions, like, the position that.
Well, that's one position you cut, the superintendent, right? The assistant, right?
Yeah.
At 120 grand a year?
And then you need to consider benefits, too.
Okay, so you cut, well, okay, so you cut that, that's, and that's great. I mean, if you didn't need that position.
Within 120, I think we could have reduced it by 120, and then, you know.
I mean, you got $1.8 million increase, no, nothing, and then that's the other thing, let's just.
Yeah, no.
I'm sorry, but not you, not you. But the media, again, the social media is, oh, they're cutting our budget. No, you're getting a $1.8 million increase in your budget.
But I think also the cost of services are increasing.
I get that, hence the increase to 1.8 million.
Saying, I think it also depends on when you negotiated your contract. So Rocky Hill could have negotiated a year before us, before state averages have gone up. It's all when your bargaining groups come to.
Me too.
Um.
I'll give you that.
And then, so we have that component, then, you know, we have, there's certain things that districts have to pay for, like, power schools, schoology, and, and those.
But we all do.
Everyone has to pay for them, but again, it's, it's, it's what, what you're getting offered versus others. It's what your services are, your special ed services, our special ed services are increasing. There's nothing you can do, because that's protected by the federal government.
I get that. And, and the, but all school systems have that problem.
They do, but some areas have higher special education than others, some have higher needs. We could get three students in town.
Yeah.
That may be diagnosed with something or move in.
I get that.
That could just totally throw.
And your contingency budget is there. You have a contingency, your choice funds are there.
I don't like it being called the contingency, because it really is.
We have another contingency, right? The 200 and 180,000 contingency too? That's not the choice funds, I don't think.
I believe it is. We, we.
I thought the choice was.
We had to consider the reduction in choice funds.
Yeah.
Because we don't have as many choice students.
Right, right, I know that, yeah.
Issue process, you know, choice districts, it's not just specific to Berlin.
Which we have offered several times now to please use that money. Please use it, we told, right? We said that at the joint meeting.
Yep, and I believe that.
Saying it now.
And in our.
Use it. That would get you closer to what you're asking for, the $290,000 increase. That would get you just about all the way there.
Leave us with nothing if one student moves in and has.
No, what, no, we're promising you tonight.
To come and beg you.
No, you don't have to beg.
I know, because you're gonna have to give it to him.
We're gonna give it to you, of course we are, of course we are.
But I just think, you know, we are seeing inflation with a lot of our services that are required.
I agree. Hence the increase.
Right.
I, that's, that's why we're, that's why, that's why it's the highest increase in 20 years.
But I think, I think.
I don't.
Position that, you know, I want to just reiterate, because I've heard the, the Board of Finance say, we're going with the superintendent's budget, not the board adopted budget, but when we adopted our budget, we took many things into consideration. Whereas the superintendent works for us, and we say, let's, let's try and come in at this. He's gonna make cuts, and the board wasn't okay with it, the parents weren't okay with it, and so the board made their decision.
Are the parents really getting the correct information sometimes? Because if they're looking at social media, they're not getting the right information. I just worry, that's what they're looking.
I know that we've done a number of things to try and message everything, and you and I have had conversations.
Yeah.
We made the chart that was shared with families, and it's shared with you, it was shared across the town, it was shared to the citizens.
Yes.
So everyone could see the tear and cut, so we, we took that approach. Another thing that was, we've put out a few articles in the Citizen. We've made sure that people have access to our board meetings. No one wants to sit there and watch the meetings, but those are.
I hear you, I know that feeling, you know that feeling, too.
So if people aren't gonna get that correct information, and people want to go with what they want to go with, then that's.
But if they go vote with that incorrect information, hence you get figures that may be off.
There's also incorrect information, I see that's coming out on the other side, that like Glastonbury is part of our Jerg, which they're not.
Correct, I get that.
And I don't believe the per pupil expenditure is accurate. I think there's also inaccurate information across the board, but without having my binder and.
No, I get it, I get it. I get it. All right, I, I just, I appreciate it, Julian. No, 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 get, no, get, go take care of your son. Take care of your son. Yes, you, yes, absolutely.
3.6%, what is still in danger?
So that's gonna have to be up to the board, and we've held off on having that discussion until after the second referendum, because I don't think it's, it's necessarily appropriate for the board to come together and make a vote when we know we have a second referendum, or even have a meeting. So referencing the tear sheet of cuts, wherever it falls on 3.6.
Yeah.
That's probably going to most likely be the position of the board, but now the board is gonna take 3.6, and we're gonna have to make decisions to, on that gap. So our proposed budget included other positions, like the lead teacher at McGee, because we eliminated an assistant principal, there are significant needs there. So that position may get cut, paraprofessionals, I'm assuming are going to have to get cut. Supplies have been held at zero, so I can't see that getting cut. But again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board and say what the board is cutting, because we're not having these conversations until our June 13th meeting or June 12th, whatever that Monday is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Julia Washington? No? Thank you, Julia.
Welcome, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Yeah, sure. It's okay. Yeah, it's all, it's, it's, it's all good, yes, that's right, yeah, it's all good.
So to just answer a couple of questions.
Sure.
Like, in regards specifically to the 5.8, it was, it's actually a really simple explanation. So we had a meeting.
Right.
The orig, uh, original proposal is gonna be 4.8.
Yeah, something like that, yeah, 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 around there.
Right, so then the board is sitting there, and they're saying, oh man, we don't want to cut the lead teacher, we don't want to cut this, we don't want to cut these staff, we just don't want to cut them.
Right.
So I say, well, what's the number that it takes to not cut the, cut those positions?[1617.14] It's five point eight. Well, you know what? You know, we're gonna go with that because we don't wanna cut the position. I I don't think there's any, there's not much explanation beyond that, that's kind of the course of the conversation, what had happened. Um, and I don't think that, I'll speak for myself.
Sure.
Um, I have never publicly said um anything in relation to. You know, you're cutting the budget or you're doing this or that. I appreciate the challenges you guys are facing in this uh. Uh, budget cycle, um, and but in regards to the social media commentary. I don't personally, I have not seen anything in regards to Board of Ed members, including myself.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I'm not saying they are, no, 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 not the members, no, 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 I agree.
We do not have control over what other people see or say.
Oh, agreed, oh, yes, oh, we know that very well here too, yes, no, we get that, I get that part.
Did see that commentary about erroneous per capita budget.
Yes.
Well.
It is what it is.
Said to me, but I can't comment on it because.
Right.
Can't see the page. Sidebar.
Yeah.
But the, but the point is.
Whole different story.
We, we faced a lot of criticism from certain personas in the political arena.
Yeah.
And me personally took quite a bit of umbrage from that, so. To to imply or suggest that there was some type of partisanship to this quote unquote campaign, I can assure you there was not. Because I personally have received nothing but disrespect from certain people.
Now, I don't mean to you, but I I get, well, I I guess, li- listen, I, well, in general, I'll lay it out. We have, uh, we have a five to one vote for the budget, just sent it forward. The, the Board of Finance is three Republicans, three Democrats, okay, so five to one voted to send it forward. Before we went to the second referendum, we unanimously voted Democrats and Republicans to send that budget forward, we thought it was a good budget. So when I see people that are former chairs of the DTC very recently making comments against what their own folks voted for. There's no other solution, there's no other, I don't understand that, um, I'm not saying, you know, and either party or, or angels, not at all, but. When we have a unanimous vote, uh, I'm from the Board of Finance folks, so one, one missing this time. Who's now, I guess, the DTC chairperson, but just coincidentally, but and and now. We, we all voted the same way to send it to the second referendum, because we raised it, you know, the three point six was. Wow, that's a big, that's a big raise, you know, that's pretty big, that's a big lift for the town. You know, and 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 as you guys know, we're sitting here, we have the rest of the town to consider, and when we cut the town budget to zero. And you're getting to three point six, it's very hard to. Look at a bigger increase, very, very difficult, forced, as we know of all this discussion tonight, we can't do that anyway here. So, we're prohibited by the charter to raise the Board of Ed, obviously, you know that, I know you know that. So to, our decision is to, do we go back to the Board of Finance, which voted five to one, to come here? We're not gonna get the numbers to, to change that, um, and we, we, I think we, you know, tonight. And other nights, we've all, and the Board of Finance, we've all. Discussed it to death maybe, um, but that's okay, but that's a good thing.
We've discussed it to death and beyond.
So, but but I, you know, listen, always, you know me, I've always wanna hear what everyone has to say and and talk about it, and that's the way to do it, and. We've had our referendum and the only thing I'll add that, you know, if I look at the figures here. Is, again, these are advisory, yes or no questions, that's the way the charter is written, it's, it's advisory as far as too high, too low. But we do certainly take it seriously. If you look at the Board of Ed this time, I just, I'm not sure, I know it's complicated. Folks have said to me they're, they're confused when they go vote. So, you know, I, I understand that too, maybe we should streamline that a little bit, but if you look at. The yes votes for the Board of Ed, two sixty-two and two high, three fifty-two, we're at six fourteen, meaning. Six hundred and fourteen people agreed with the budget and the three forty-two, of course, said it was too high. So, as opposed to this five nineteen that said it's too low, so. Again, I mean, we could play with the numbers all night, I don't mean to do that, I don't really like to do that, but, uh, you know, we have a lower turnout the second time and. A higher vote, I, 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 I think if we went back to a third referendum. We would end up like Colchester did last year, I think they had, they went to referendums because that's how their charter reads till November before they got a budget passed. So I, you know, it's, it's, you know, we, we've done, everyone's on their due diligence on both sides, Board of Ed, Superintendent, Town. Uh, voters have done what they can do, I don't, I don't know what else to do, but that, that's just where we're at, so. What do you think? What are we thinking here? What are we gonna do? Comments?
Jack Kennedy once said, not to me personally.
That was, that was, uh, true, I'm just. Truman to you, yeah, yeah, sorry.
He was my buddy, but. You know. Doing the right thing is easy. Knowing what the right thing is a little more difficult. I can't support the budget. We're gonna vote out tonight because of the vote, the last two votes, people.
You just supported the last time.
I know, I know, but people came out and voted a tax increase on themselves, says a lot to me. I mean, that's like calling an airstrike in on yourself on the battlefield, they know the taxes are gonna go up, they know that. Um, it's a rebel year and yet they voted it was too low. So for them, I'm, I'm voting no.
All right. What do we just say, Charlie?
Sixty-seven people thought the Board of Ed uh budget was too low, we know that's a. A democratic positive to raise the Board of Ed. But in practicality, I don't. See a resolution to do that, we're not gonna get the votes in a joint meeting. And uh, I think it's a good increase for the Board of Ed. I was on the town council when we were the Budget Committee and it was an incredibly arduous. Monotonous thing to go through every line item and discuss every issue. And the Board of Ed, I mean, uh, the Board of Finance did a tremendous amount of work on this. And I'm inclined to go with their vote and and support the budget as it is.
Sandy?
Yeah, I, I have to agree that, I mean, I think it's, the budgets have been looked at up and down, left and right. Um, obviously, I don't think there's anything we can do on the town budget as I, as I previously stated. You know, the, the Board of Ed, um, you know, three point six percent. Covers what's needed and a little bit more from, from the understanding I have from what the superintendent wanted. I understand the Board of Education um voted for higher amount, uh, because they didn't wanna cut any positions. Um, I've been in that position before from, from business and with budgets and you get your budget, you're, and you have to make it work. You know, nobody likes to cut people, um, I always look at open positions first, if there's an open position, well, let's not fill that and see what we can do. Maybe there's that opportunity on the Board of Ed's side as well, where they can look at positions that are open instead of maybe cutting positions. Um, of people that are already, you know, filled, um, nobody likes to do that, but, you know, as you said, doing the, you know. If it was easy. Not a problem, um, but it's a hard choice to make, um, but I also don't think that. You know, we can go back and forth as to why so many people showed up or didn't show up to vote, was it interest, not interest, knowing about it, not knowing about it. Um, but seven percent of the town, you know, there's still ninety-three percent out there that we have to think of. Um, I don't know the exact number of, of households that have students in school, you know, maybe it's twenty-five, thirty percent, I think that's probably high. Um, for the percentage with, with kids in school, so you still have to think of those other voters as well. Um, I think especially with the revel year, the inflation that we're dealing with still, um, with a lot of things. Um, I, I think we've looked at, looked at it every way can, I, I have the trust with the Board of Finance. Um, you know, I know Jerry wasn't happy with it the last time, he seems okay with it this time as well. Um, with a five to, five to one vote, so I would be inclined to, to accept this vote, uh, this budget as presented.
Okay, thank, uh, Da- Da- Donna, which, uh, Donna and Donna. Whoever hits the button first is the winner.
Okay, so I, I apologize, I'll, I'll go very quickly, um, I just had to get my vote in. Um, you know, multitasking, and again, I apologize for not physically being there one more week. Um, I have to say, the Board of Finance has done a phenomenal job. Um, I, you know, I don't envy any of them for having to make some of the decisions that they had to make. Um, I think they've done a great job, uh, although there are some people that, you know, certainly would like to see more money um at the Board of Ed. I certainly think that what they've been giving is, um, you know, like we've said, the ask was there. And the superintendent is, is satisfied with uh what's been give, given to them. I mean, we even had, um, you know, Sam, and thank you, Sam, if you're still in the audience, come out and. And eloquently say that it's the right thing to do, we're, we're moving forward. Um, you know, in my opinion, in a very bipartisan way, I think that, um. Yeah, I'd love to give more money for, for all of us as far as that goes. Uh, but times are tough and we haven't even seen how tough it's going to get. Um, I think that if we can do what we do and hold taxes, generally speaking, a- and make the Board of Ed. Uh, fairly whole, um, I think it's a good budget, I really do, and I, and I commend everybody that work, has worked so hard. To get to where we are this evening, so, uh, that's my personal opinion, thank you.
Donna?
Yeah, I, um, obviously, I would like to see uh the Board of Ed fully funded to. Uh, the amount that the Board of Ed had requested and they, I think they gave some compelling rationale, but I think I am gonna vote. Uh, in a practical manner, um, right now, and that is. We're not gonna see a change here, we did have an increase over. Now, what was it the Board of Finance originally came out with, they did increase it. I think that's probably as good as it's gonna get, ceremonially, I could vote against this, but I'm actually not going to do that. I'm going to vote for it, however, I would suggest in the future as someone in the field of education. And having been an administrator and a doctorate in education as well. Um, I do think that we should think about. Where the money is going within the Board of Education, I think the pairs are important. But I all think, I also think it's important to think about, and this, I would consider, ask this of the Board of Education. Having an assistant superintendent, not having an assistant superintendent, I think is a huge vacancy in a district. I would also say. McGee as well, I think, I think it, I, I tend to lean toward your top tier positions. I mean, we're a small Board of Education, we're not top heavy by any means, but I do think also McGee does need. Um, more support, middle schools all need a lot of support on the, on the upper level. And maybe that's, maybe that's, I need to attend more board meetings to, to express my, my, my educated opinion. And my professional opinion with regard to that, but I am voting uh for to move the budget along.
Thank you. All right, we've all had our chance and thank you all for taking time to be here and uh, thank you, Julia, for coming, I appreciate it. I think the discussion, I know it's tedious, it, it, it's tough, but it, it's all helpful for the residents to hear from everybody. I mean, we, it is an all-inclusive process and it has been, and I think we've all worked hard at it, so. With that in mind, um, so what uh do we have, so there's no, what's the motion? We just, we would just vote to accept the Board of, the Board of Finance budget as forwarded to us, I guess that would be.
Yeah.
If, if, you know, we'll, we'll make a motion to do that and we'll take a vote.
I move, do you, accept the Board of Finance budget as presented to the council.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, uh, further discussion? Carry none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed?
Nay.
Nay, well, so, one nay.
One nay, yeah.
Nay, okay, thank you, thank you, everyone, I, I'm, I'm sorry, we, we, but it's good, I, I don't, you know, I'm not apologizing. We had great discussion, folks showed up, that's what it's about, it's a good thing, all right, thank you all, on to number two. Thank you, Julie, again.
Getting my mic on first.
Yes.
So the next item is uh time sensitive and it pertains to the YMCA daycare project. So this project was substantially completed and occupancy was approved. Hubbard in September twenty twenty-two, McGee in November of twenty twenty-two. However, the general contractor, Link, is behind making payments to two of the subcontractors. Okay, so Save More Heating and Cooling, and then the other one is TNT Electrical Contractors. Contract has made some progress, but not fast enough, and one of the subcontractors, Save More. Uh, who has informed the town that they will pursue legal action against the town. Unless the amount they are owed, nineteen thousand, is paid in full by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, that's tomorrow.
Okay, no deadline on this one, Arash.
Unfortunately, the contractor failed to acquire the performance bond that was required. Even though the money was set aside for the purchase of the barn in the project. We should have verified this before the beginning of the project, but we missed it.
So who, the town missed the, that we didn't have a performance bond?
Yeah, they, they were, it was in the budget, they were supposed to buy it. And they said they're gonna send it, send it, but we failed to follow up on it.
Okay.
Ended up not having the barn.
I assume we have. Hopefully fixed that process so that it doesn't.
Yeah, it was the first time it has ever happened in the entire town construction.
We are human beings, we make mistakes, but.
So we, we've got systems in place to.
Great.
To make sure that next time, things like that won't happen.
Thank you.
Um, Jeff's Corporation Council is working with the contractor to make everyone whole. But in the meantime, we would like to pay the subcontractor directly from the funds that are available in Department sixty-one. Not like the contractor is not responsive or not calling us back.
Yeah.
They wanna work, they have paid a little bit at a time.
Okay.
And uh, Jeff has been in conversation with the, the contractor as well as the, the subcontractors. But I, I think right now, we would rather pay this to avoid litigation and get the money back from the contractor.
From Link.
From Link.
Link, Link is the general contractor.
Um, would you like to add anything, Jeff, since you've been working with these two groups?
What say you, counselor?
No, I think, I think Arash covered it, you know, the, the town, it doesn't make any sense to force Save More to file suit. And have the town incur expenses associated with disposing of the lawsuit, it's a nineteen thousand dollar balance, so. You know, the contractor, the general contractor has made repeated promises and repeatedly failed. To honor its obligations and its promises, so the town can close out Save More and then I'll pursue reimbursement from Link.
Okay. Yes, yeah.
Has Link been paid in full for their services?
Yes, they have been.
So, I, I have a question too, I'm sorry, I have a quick, I'm looking for my hand raised button here. I have a quick question, so how long, um. Have these subcontractors not been, like, has it been thirty days, sixty days? How, how backlog is Link on this payment?
I'm gonna have Doug, Doug come in here to the podium, I'm sorry, Jeff, do you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, several, several months.
Several months?
Yeah, it's way, it's way beyond past due.
Okay, all right, I'm just curious, and it's something that we can pursue since we're gonna foot the bill here.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Does Link agree that that's the correct amount owed to these people? Do they have any counterclaim?
No. They don't have any counterclaim, they've been, they've been telling us for probably four months, three months, that they were gonna pay these bills.
Unfa- unfortunately, it's a standard operating procedure by a general contractor in his state. In the moment we pay this to these folks, the other two contractors owe money, we'll make the same threat, are we prepared to make good for them too?
Are there others?
One more.
There's one other one?
How much is that?
I missed that. How much, yeah, how much is that one?
Uh, there's approximately thirty outstanding right now.
Thirty thousand outstanding for the other one? So I, I, I'm guessing we're going down the road to pay them too.
Cause if I were him and I saw this happen tonight, I'd jump right on the bandwagon and threaten legal action.
You wanna share that? I think this sub, other subcontractor is working with Link, so there are other jobs that they are working together.
Gotcha.
They're, they're working through the process on their own.
So they may not be as inclined to do that?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Council, I apologize for this, for this error, it was administrative mistake on my part in the crossfire last summer, um. Project goes back to late twenty twenty.
Okay.
Three years in the making, um, to get, believe it where we were, other, there were some fumbles, we, we both, all entities and parties working on this have learned. As this joint venture progressed, moved ahead, but certainly it was an error on my part, um, fortunately, we're working through it. Um, we did have some conversation with the contractor this weekend, this morning, we're hoping that they do come through. There is retainage still in the project, the problem, it's not our retainage, it's the YMCA's retainage, so they.
Oh.
They funded the money for the project, so we don't wanna. Get any more difficult with funding, so this is the cleanest financial way for resolve with this first issue, um. We're just hoping to get through it, but the checks and balances are put in place for, for their action moving forward, but. This, there's many challenges, um, many fumbles, get through the goal, but, um, the good thing is it's functioning, it's operational.
Yeah.
We met most of the criteria, but this, this did come back in an unfortunate manner and. I mean, hard lessons learned, it's very frustrating, discouraging for me personally, that nine years and everything that we've been a part of and been through. Millions of dollars in projects, dozens and dozens of successful things, town's been a part of it. This overshadows that for me, so it's, it's challenging, it's frustrating, but I, I know we'll get through it and. Certainly a hard lesson learned.
Well, Doug, I appreciate that, I, I, I mean, listen, we're, you, you're human beings and despite, you know. What kind of processes in place, stuff happens, so I, I appreciate.
Waiver is part of our process?
Yes, yeah, so, uh, lien waivers and, um, there was a bid bond, it was.
That was missed, but these folks signed a lien waiver for this amount?
We're working with all that too, lien waivers for closeout, so. It's been very tight with Corporation Council, the Architect, YMCA. Finance Director, Arash, trying to get through this and. It's all cleaned up administratively to close it out.
Yeah, we, we appreciate all your work and, and Jeff and Arash and yourself and your, and your team there.
Yes, sir.
I just, uh, echo what Mark said, everyone's human, people make mistakes, but I hope we keep an S list. Of people who do us wrong.
I was just gonna say, I mean, we won't be working with Link anytime.
Good assumption, yeah, yeah.
The, the whole thing about, you know, being exposed, getting us, getting our, our community out there for people to work for us, but we can run that risk and.
Yeah.
It's the first time for me in nine years in this role and.
Yeah.
Had very good luck with contractors and this certainly, um. It's tough to fly this, but I know we'll get through it and.
Yeah.
Checklist, we'll, we'll make a stronger moving ahead and pull us together, both with the Board of Ed and there is any joint ventures on the road to why that. We'll remember back on this stuff.
I, I would imagine, yeah, I would imagine as you said, that contractors don't wanna, you know.
Yeah.
Be persona, persona non grata in the town of Berlin, right? They want, they want our money just as well as anybody, so, yeah.
And the word gets out and.
Yes, of course, yeah, no, 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 listen, it happens, thank God it wasn't a one point two million dollar error, so that's okay. All right, so, all right, folks, uh, any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve a payment of nineteen, up to nineteen thousand dollars to Save More Heating and Cooling of Southington, Connecticut. For work performed related to the YMCA daycare project at McGee School and Hubbard School on behalf of Link General Contracting, formerly of. Airville, Connecticut, now Windsor Lock, to avoid legal action against the town. This closeup continues the town of Berlin, Link General Contracting and the town of Berlin's corporation.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Carry none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right, motion carries, thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Aroche. Okay, everybody tonight. So motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Some move second. Rush to vote. All those in favor?
Yay.
All right, yeah. All right, so we're only, uh. An hour, it should have been.
I lost the bet again.
Ha, 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 ha. Listen, well, whatever. It, it, it is what it is.
It's a meeting with the heads of the five family.
Ha, ha, ha.
That's all right. I take this meeting any day as opposed to the next four hours I'm gonna be up there, so.
Exactly. God bless you being there.
All right.
Plug the clock.
Yeah, right. Thank you all very much for putting up with me. Good night now. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, everyone.